Don't. Are you, did you, did yours come up? Did you find the agenda? Yeah, me neither. Yours open? Wonder what you're doing that I'm not doing? Oh, oh, we did the whole thing? That's probably what I'll do.
Well, they can't get there, so I'm just gonna give you that anyway.
It may, it may. Since I'm techn- I'm technologically, whatever you call it. Bankrupt. So where, how do I get that? Oh, wait, okay, do I get the board doc down?
He's thankful.
Don't start without me, hold on. This thing is slow. This thing is slow. Worse. Now that I restarted, it's even worse. Can't even bring up meetings. Now it's even worse. Think I need an engineer, Scott, what do you know? Well, this is George's.
Oh, that's George's.
I wonder if George's.
The board doc's not here.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, I can't get back even the homepage to try it. No, no, watch, okay, try to.
Okay, alright. That's all I needed.
Needed that gentle touch. She does, because I don't have one. Are we about ready to begin, Madam Superintendent? I don't know what you say up there. Give a form? Alright, Mike's excused, Mike's running late. Have we heard from Paul?
No.
Jackie? Connie? Did you hear from Jackie or Paul? I think Paul warned us, he might be late. That could be too. Yeah, we got five. Pardon me while I break the mic. Good evening, everyone, we call a meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible. Thank you all for coming this evening, the first item on our agenda, the moment of silence, for Justin D. Randall, a 2006 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, Cindy Lou DePalma-Gromney, a 1972 graduate, James Gouche, an employee with the North Syracuse Central School District, and Doris Louis Doherty, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. First item on the agenda, 2A, is the Cisro North Syracuse High School graduation ceremony. Ms. Speech, and Mr. Leclaire.
Good evening and welcome graduates. I just want to take a moment to congratulate you. I know it has been a twist and turn road for you to get here, but none of that matters anymore. What matters is that you were dedicated, you did what you needed to do, you're here tonight, and when you walk out, you will have your diplomas in hand. So congratulations and all the best to you in the future. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Leclaire.
Thank you, Ms. Speech. Graduates, let me start by congratulating each and one of you of this accomplishment. You are here tonight because of perseverance, and all of us here are extremely proud of you for staying the course as you are a graduating member of the class of 2016. Let this accomplishment be a reminder that obstacles do not have to stop you from achieving your goals. As you begin the next phase of your life, I would like to share a few parting words of encouragement as I did with your classmates in June. One would be to live life with a purpose and pursue your passions with a fierce determination, and you will not be disappointed. If there are obstacles, look back on tonight as you are not deterred and you accomplished a goal. Two, stay true to yourself during this journey and don't compromise your morals and values that have been taught to you by your loved ones here tonight. Graduates, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve as your principal, and I wish you much success and happiness. Now for presentation of diplomas, please come up front and receive your diploma from my house principals, Ms. Slater and Ms. Lorenzini. And Ms. Speech. Alexis Dilaba. Adriana Dodge. Liam Neil Dunn. Manaya Hicks. Jennifer LaFave. Joseph Rivera. Michael James Ward. Cameron Waters. Bailey Noel Wise. Graduates, please rise. It is now time to remove your tassels from right to left. Audience, please help me congratulate the 2016 graduates of Cisro North Syracuse High School. Again, congratulations, thank you all for coming tonight, there will be a reception across the hall, so please join us.
Oh, they did? Superb. Yeah, they coming up here? Motion for them to come in.
Oh, no, you guys can do it.
Absolutely. Right here, can they go like this? Recognition on of whatever. Thank you, the next item on the agenda is the presentation of the student survey results, please come forward.
All right, cheers. Good evening, my name is Jeremiah Butler, I am co-president of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. For those that don't know what the Superintendent Student Advisory Council is, we are a group of strong student leaders from each school within the North Syracuse Central School District. We represent grades five through 12. We meet on a regular basis with the superintendent of schools, Miss Annette Speech, the council reports school issues to Ms. Speech directly, and we work with her to find ways in solving them. What we have for you tonight is a short presentation consisting of the compiled results from the student survey. The survey took place at Roxborough Road Middle, Gillette Road Middle, North Syracuse Junior High, and Cisro North Syracuse High School. The surveys took place for a duration of one to two weeks at the end of May in the 2015-16 school year. From CNS, we received 376 respondents, and from the North Syracuse Junior High School, we received 1,175 respondents. From Gillette Road Middle School, we received 933 respondents, and from Roxborough Road Middle, we received 839. Starting with question number three, we have Nia Mitchell.
Hi, my name is Nia Mitchell, I'm a junior, and I'm the vice president, and I'm representing CNS. The first question was faculty members are courteous and helpful. Eighty-seven percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. And I know that part of what makes schools so enjoyable for me is having a good relationship and just knowing that the faculty members are always gonna be kind towards me.
Question number four was, I feel welcome at my school. Eighty-two percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed, however, eighteen percent disagreed. Eighteen percent is not a large number, but all students should feel welcome at their school.
Hi, I'm Sarah Wicks, I am also co-president of Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and I will be a senior this year at CNS. Um, question number five was, I feel connected to my school, and sixty-nine percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with that, but that was district-wide, and if you look at each of the schools individually, in Gillette Road, seventeen percent disagreed with that, in Rocks, twenty-four percent disagreed. But then, as soon as you go up to the junior high, it gets up to thirty-nine percent disagree with that. And at the high school, fifty-three percent of kids did not feel connected to their school. And I can't help but feel, at high school myself, that that's the time when it really matters, you need to feel connected for graduation or to really excel at that time, and so that's an area that we really should focus on.
Question number six, I believe that school administration works their best to solve issues that students may have. Only sixty-three percent of our students, district-wide, strongly agree or agree with this statement. And the one thing I would like to point, point out about this question is that the Superintendent Student Advisory Council is working for this percentage. We want all students in our district, teachers, our staff, our school administration, are working towards making our students feel comfortable, safe, and fulfill their educational experience.
Hi, my name is Emily Keen, I'm going into eighth grade, and this year I represent in Gillette Road Middle School. Question seven is, I believe that other students in my school are good role models. Thirty-eight percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement.
To Linder and Teeny, I am going to be a junior, and I represent CNS High School. Question number eight was, I learn best. Um, as you can see, roughly sixty-five percent of respondents checked that they learn best visually. Personally, I can agree with this statement, as I'm a visual learner, and I think that it's important that you look at how each student can learn that way to get the best experience in the classroom.
Question nine is, eighty-one percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. And although eighty-one, although eighty-one percent is the majority of the students, roughly twenty percent of all the students disagree with this question, which is one in every five people.
Hello, my name is Damon Vilnav, I, um, am going into eighth grade, and I represent Gillette Road Middle School this year. Question ten is, I clearly understand what is expected of me as a student. Ninety-four percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with this statement. I believe this shows how great we, the teachers and all the faculty members are doing to clearly show who, what we need to do as students.
Question eleven is, technology is available in my school and helps me with my learning. Eighty-three percent of, um, respondents agreed or strongly agree with this statement. Although that is a majority of students, almost a fifth of students don't feel like we have technology, so I feel as though we should maybe try and meet the technology needs and the technology that's coming out.
Question number twelve was, I use the district website to get the information that I need. Forty-nine percent of respondents agreed to the above statement. And I think that since less than half of our students, district-wide, agree with this statement, that the teachers should make their websites more informative and helpful so that, so that students will be able to use it to get the information that they need in order to succeed.
Question number thirteen, I'm aware of events and activities that are happening in my school. Only, uh, three-fourths of our students, about three-fourths of our students, agree or strongly agree to this statement. As a senior at CNS High School, I feel it is really important to have student awareness about school activities, homecoming, and other school events. It's really the only time where us as students come together as one for one common goal, you know, whether it's to win that football game, basketball game, soccer game, whatever it may be. Um, our students need to, um, be more aware of extracurricular activities and, um, football games, whatever it may be that are happening at our school.
Good evening, my name is Giorgio Rouda, and, uh, this past year, I was a seventh grader at Gillette Road Middle School. This upcoming year, I'll be an eighth grader representing the junior high school. Question number fourteen reads, I feel safe in school. As you can see, seventy-six percent of the survey respondents did indeed agree that they feel safe in school. Although seventy-six percent is a vast majority of the respondents, one hundred percent should be our goal. Feeling safe is the first step to academic success, and as a supervalent district, it is our very first priority to make our students feel protected.
Question number fifteen was, I feel safe on the bus. Seventy-eight percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. But as Giorgio said, um, that's almost a quarter of our students who don't feel safe on the bus, which, that's the first thing they do in the morning oftentimes, and if they don't feel safe there, how does that affect the rest of their day and affect their learning?
Question number sixteen states, I know exactly what to do in an emergency situation. According to the survey we administered, eighty-seven percent of the respondents know exactly what to do in an emergency situation. To ensure the safety of our students and faculty, we must continue to frequently practice drills until all of the members of our district know exactly what to do in any given emergency situation.
Question number seventeen was, I am given a reasonable amount of homework each day. Sixty-three percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed. And as before, I looked at the individual schools, and as you went up through the schools, at CNS, fifty-four percent actually disagreed with that. And at first, when I saw that question, I thought, okay, who is really gonna say, I get a reasonable amount of homework each day? But at the same time, it's also alarming, because you see the proof at school every single day, when people just come in between sports and all the extracurricular activities that they're trying to feel connected to their school in. And then also, with an unreasonable amount of homework, they end up being too tired or too drained to learn, and so that is a pretty scary amount.
Question eighteen is, I understand what homework is assigned to me. Eighty-two percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed. Personally, I received homework that does not follow the day's lesson, and it makes it very difficult to complete. Teachers need to work on explaining the homework and making sure that all of their students understand it, because when you go home and you're sitting and doing your homework, if you don't understand it, it just discourages you for the rest of the day and even the next days.
Hi, my name is Jenna Sherry, and this past year, I was a representative at the junior high school. In this new coming school year, I'll be a representative at the high school. Question nineteen reads, I get the information I need from the online gradebook. And fifty-three percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. That's only a little bit over half, so I feel that it needs to be more known to students and parents about the online gradebook and what it has to offer, because I use online gradebook, and it's really helpful, I always know what my grade is, what I need to do to improve my grade, and I feel like all students and parents should have this opportunity as well. Question twenty reads, I feel comfortable raising my hand to ask a question. Seventy-one percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. Seventy-one percent seems like a lot, but the percentage that doesn't agree with this, that's also a lot too, when you think about it, because school is all about learning and asking questions to help you learn, so I don't know what we should do, but I feel like, um, in a good learning environment, everyone should feel comfortable to raise their hand and ask a question. So we should work on making students feel, um, they're more welcome to do that.
Question twenty-one was, I am included in all classroom activities. As you can see, eighty-three percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. However, you still have that seventeen percent of students that did not feel that they were included. So that's definitely something we need to pay attention to, because everyone should feel included in the classroom. Question twenty-two reads, I feel comfortable expressing my interests and opinions at school. Sixty-four percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. So you have a large chunk of students that do feel comfortable, however, you have a very large chunk of students that do not feel comfortable. And one of the number one things that you want for a student and for a school is that everyone feels comfortable, everyone is allowed to have a voice in their school.
Question number twenty-three states, when I don't understand the material being taught, my teacher is always willing to help me. This slide conveys that a great eighty-one percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed that their teachers are willing to help them if they are confused or unsure of the homework being, oh, sorry, of the material being taught. Our students must know that their teachers are always available for extra help and guidance, and that they care for their student's success.
Question number twenty-four was, I find that my teachers are generally available to help me. Eighty-five percent of the respondents agreed or strongly agreed with this statement. And although that is a large chunk, I think that we should pay attention to the fifteen percent, because sometimes a teacher will be teaching, and I know that sometimes I'm in this situation where I and I know other students just don't understand what's, what we're learning, so I think it's important that teachers are available as much as possible after school for the fifteen percent that don't agree.
Um, question twenty-five states, I am satisfied with the meals at school. Thirty-five percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement. This shows that we need to, our students, meals are very important to a learning environment. You need to feel have, you need to feel energy to wanna learn. So if only thirty-five percent of people agree with this, that's, that's seventy-five, or sixty-five percent that don't agree, and that's just, we need to work on that.
Question twenty-six states, I like the after-school activities offered at my school. Seventy-eight percent of respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the above statement, so that is a lot, which makes me happy. Um, but for the percent, percentage that doesn't, um, think there's a good, um, activity for them, maybe we could find some other clubs to include, but for the ones we have, we should definitely keep them and help to fund them, because hobbies and interests is what makes each person unique, and that's what clubs deal with, hobbies and interests. And also, being in a club, it makes you feel connected to your school, like you contribute something. And I do a lot of clubs, and it makes me feel good, and I feel connected with my school. So I think every student should, um, get the opportunity to feel that as well.
Okay, so now that we have all these results, we're asking, where do we go from here, and what do we do now? Superintendent Student Advisory Council, we will be working our hardest to see what improvements we can actually make out of these, and, um, with the help of various faculty members and with our meetings with Ms. Speech. And we will also be looking further into certain questions that were a part of that. Um, for example, the finding other students as good role models had an extremely low number of students that agreed or disagreed, and we would like to know why. Why do students think that? What makes people think there's a good, what a good role model is? Sorry about that. And so, um, we wanna look more into that this year. And, um, also some questions that might have been interpreted the wrong way, or, um, not exactly know, people didn't know what it was asking, we could look further into those, so. Are there any questions?
Hi, first of all, I just wanna congratulate you all, what a wonderful presentation, you did a fantastic job. Um, Ms. Speech, you should be so proud of them. Okay, this question's for, um, for you and, how are students selected to be on the committee? I know there's representation from each school.
There's representation from each school, but if you don't mind, I'm gonna bounce that back to the two co-presidents, because this last, the last two years, they worked on taking on, um, their officers, and they came up with an application process and a selection process, so, um, Jeremiah or Sarah, would you like to speak to that?
Yes. So about two years ago, uh, actually, three years ago, I found myself sitting on Ms. Speech's Superintendent Cabinet. That's what it was called three years ago, and now it's called the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. So three years ago, I found myself sitting in, in a room of kids, and we had six meetings a year, and every meeting, it felt like less kids were coming, right? Less kids were coming to each meeting, and at the end of the year, we had four kids out of the twelve that were on the council. So I, I sat down with Ms. Speech, and I said, you know, how can we fix this? How can we find committed students that are, that will be dedicated, that will come to every single meeting, that they will do work in between the meetings, which is the whole entire point here, um, to make this, to make this club successful? So through, through that, um, Sarah and I have sat down, and we've made an application process, and the few things that we look at, um, from a student's application is that they're not overly committed in their school, and they're not underly committed. We generally want to involve all of our students, we, we want a diverse group of students in that large conference room here, um, to meet and discuss all the issues at all of our schools. And, uh, did you have anything to add? Oh, okay, well, does that answer your question, Mary?
It does, it does, thank you.
But yeah, this year, we have had really good attendance, ever since the application, and things are going awesome. And like, also, I just wanna give credit, so many of them meet outside, like you said, we have like various meetings outside of, um, just like, constantly meeting at the high school, at the junior high, and we made suggestion boxes at each of the schools, so everybody's staying busy, so.
And how did you come up with the questions for the survey?
I can, yeah, so the community survey that was given, we switched a lot of those around to just basing it off of the students, and- And we also wanted to keep them kind of parallel so that we could look at what the parent, like what parents had to say. Did they feel like their students were getting a reasonable amount of homework? And did their kids think that they were getting a reasonable amount of homework? And you can kind of compare the two. And most of them were based off of their, correct?
Yes, yes. All, all of the questions were paralleled with the community survey, which the parents took in the past school year. And from the community survey, we made the student survey. So it's going to be really interesting to see how our parents feel rather than what our students feel that are actually in our schools. So that, that's something that we will look at, the Superintendent Student Advisory Council will look at in the future.
Did you give them an area to leave comments? For instance, they, if they say they're dissatisfied with something, could they give examples of what they were dissatisfied in?
Yes, yes, we did, Mary. At the, at the end of, at the, here's the packet, actually, it's a packet here of the three thousand three hundred twenty-three respondents here left comments. And at the end of the survey, we left a big comment box and we didn't wanna leave a comment box after every single question, so we just wanted to compile it all at the end of the survey.
All right, I just wanted to add in, looking through those comments, obviously there are a lot of silly ones, but there's a lot of very interesting ones that worry you, but then there's also so many great ones. So people that just honestly feel like their school is helping them so much and that's very encouraging to see.
And what did you learn from the whole process? I mean, besides the answers to the questions, did, was there anything that you learned doing the survey?
I, I learned personally that we have a very diverse group of students within our school district that meet, require different needs. And it's gonna be very challenging to meet those needs for our students, but that's why we're here. That's why you guys are here and you, I know you guys are working very hard every single day to, you know, meet these requirements. And most of the students in the North Syracuse, North Syracuse Central School District don't really understand how hard you guys are all working. And I've stressed this at our Superintendent Student Advisory Council. You know, you know, Don Keegan, Mr. Keegan, you know, putting together the, the budget. And, you know, it hurts to make budget cuts, but that's what you have to do sometimes. And I stress to the, all of the students that, you know, you, they're, they're, they're for us, they're working for us and they, they wanna help us. They don't wanna cut any of these extracurricular activities and they want to start, you know, reinstating these extracurricular activities that have been cut in years past. Any other questions from the board?
So before you all leave, I am very impressed with all of you and the work that you've done. And I just wanna point out a couple of things. This group, they made the survey on their own. When we go to the meetings, I do very little facilitating, they facilitate themselves. And they came in during their summer vacation and I gave them the task as I do the other cabinet members sitting around this table. I told them, I'm treating you as I do my administrative team. We're gonna look at this, we'll frame it, but the presentation is up to you and it's due to Mrs. Nandan by a specific date at a specific time. And that's what they did. So outstanding, outstanding. They already have plans for follow-up with this and the work that we're going to start doing this coming year. Parents in the audience, thank you for bringing them tonight and thank you for sharing your wonderful children with us. I noticed some of you had cameras going. I don't know if you know this or not, but the, every board meeting is videotaped. People at home can be watching it online. And tomorrow after the meeting, you can go on the district website, click under Board of Education and, and the students can watch themselves as well. So this is all archived and online. Great job, guys. Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your season.
Thank you very much. My next presentation is the Universal Pre-Kindergarten, Learn as You Grow in Northminster. Who's going first?
Thank you so much for the, thank you so much for the opportunity to address the board this evening and share with you a year in life of a Universal Pre-Kindergarten student at Learn as You Grow. We begin our year with an open house, which affords our parents and children the opportunity to come in, meet the teachers and see the classrooms for the first time. This starts our home-to-school connection. This year, we were very fortunate to have transportation join us for our AM open house. So the children had the opportunity to actually get on the bus, meet the drivers, try on their seatbelts. And this gave them a sense of familiarity with the bus as well as giving parents a comfort level, which is extremely important as they send their three and four-year-olds off to school. Our first day of school begins with drop-off and pickup attendance checks. There's a single point of entry at our, both of our locations and we do utilize the bus tag system to ensure that each child is in the right place on their very first day of school to welcome them to their learning experience that will continue throughout the next thirteen years. One of our students on their first day, you'll see that he has his bus tag. We're always excited to welcome a new class and we're looking forward to another great year with another exciting first day in just a few weeks. On the first day of school, our children receive a take-home folder. This is one of the tools that we use to encourage parents to make that home-to-school connection. The folders allow for communication, activities that we're working on, special projects. This is where we share the activities that we are doing with Handwriting Without Tears, our concept books from Scott Forsman, weekly newsletters, our calendars. And this is also a way that our parents can communicate back with us to share information as well. Our classroom routines begin on the first day of school, starting with a consistent schedule, working on transitioning from one learning center to another learning center, working on daily self-help routines. They're established at the beginning of the year and carried through the conclusion of the program. It's extremely important that children feel comfortable so that consistency is important as far as classroom routines. We also incorporate a variety of different special days into our program, including a fall pumpkin patch, a celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday, and breakfast with special people, moms, dads, grandmas, grandpas, who come in and get a chance to visit the program. The Common Core domains are incorporated throughout the day in the learning centers. These activities include both individual peer-to-peer activities, small and large group activities, where the children have an opportunity to explore and share ideas and thoughts. Our classroom is fortunate to utilize the Handwriting Without Tears program. We have been utilizing the system for the past two years. Two years ago, we were invited to attend the training held by the North Syracuse School District. And that program has made a tremendous difference in our activities that our teachers are providing for the children. In addition to things that are familiar and associated with handwriting without tears, such as mat man, wet dry try, roll-a-dough, tag bags, our teachers incorporate the Get Set for School curriculum into all of our areas of learning. Using tools such as mathematics their way and the numbers and math from Get Set for School, the children explore counting and cardinality, operations and algebraic thinking, measurement and data and geometry, as you can see in a hands-on, child-directed environment. Language and literacy is also a key in our program, where we promote the development of oral language in addition to listening and comprehension skills. As you can see, the language and literacy activities are found throughout the room and outside of the room, and these activities allow our children to develop a lifelong love of literature. Children utilize the three-part scientific theory to investigate the world around them in our science centers. We work on citizenship, geography, history and economics as part of our social studies curriculum. And we incorporate community-based organizations into the school social studies curriculum. This year, we had visits from the dental hygienist. The sheriff's department came in to do a presentation on pedestrian safety, on seatbelt safety and on bicycle safety. We were also fortunate to have the Cicero Fire Department join both of our centers at Ultra Drive in North Syracuse, as well as the Northern Anandaga Public Librarian. This year, we did add a visit from an optometrist who completed a vision screening on all of the children in the UPK program. These vision screenings resulted in referrals for several children to receive eyeglasses, which helped in their early learning experience. We, we practiced the arts through music, theater, dance, visual arts, song, and a variety of hands-on creative expression activities, including a trip to the Civic Center where the children have the opportunity to watch a real play for Dashar's Magical Gift. One of the focuses of our program has been our parent-teacher conferences. They occur both in a formal setting where parents have the opportunity to see the progress of individual, of their individual child, as well as to ask any questions that they may have and see where we're headed going forward through the school year. But our, sorry, thank you. But our parent conferences are in addition to daily contact that we have with our afternoon parents, who do both drop-off and pickup, as well as through the take-home folders that we mentioned earlier, and encouraging parents to take advantage of our open-door policy so that they can feel free to visit the program at any time as often as possible. Our year culminates with our graduation celebration at the SRC Arena on the OCC campus. And finally, we'd like to present our results from this year's class. Our testing and data represents all one hundred ninety-seven children in the program. This includes approximately twenty percent of our UPK population that were referred for or recommended, recommended for or received additional services in addition to our classroom program. Our first slide is our summary of our math learning opportunities. The blue bar represents our fall information that we gathered from our reports and then our spring information is in the red bar. As you can see, all of the areas in math resulted in an increased understanding in math concepts. Counting and cardinality increased thirty-one percent. There was a forty-three percent growth in operations and algebraic thinking, forty percent growth in data and measurement, and thirty-five percent growth in geometry, which is quite drastic when you're looking at mastery at a kindergarten level for children who are four and five then heading into their kindergarten experience. Our literacy screening focused on four different areas. On the far left, you'll see oral language, which increased by twenty-seven percent. Alphabet knowledge, which increased by thirty-six percent. Concepts of print, which includes pre-reading skills, which increased by thirty percent. And comprehension of written text, which increased by forty-eight percent from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, where children have the opportunity to share what they've learned from informational text and fictional text. Finally, we look at phonological awareness, where there was a forty-one percent increase in children's mastery at a kindergarten level. Phonological awareness looks at letter recognition and letter sound correlation. And we felt it easiest to see if we look at the Fox in the Box scores, where we look at capital letter recognition. In the fall, the children on average recognized nine capital letters. And you'll see in the spring, that jumps to twenty capital letters, kindergarten and a mastery level. So they are seeing those letters, recognizing those letters and identifying those letters. Lowercase, we also saw a drastic increase from five letters recognized in the fall to sixteen letters recognized in the spring. And sound recognition in the fall, on average, our children were able to create one letter sound based on a specific letter and that number increased to eleven on average. In the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, we are very excited to introduce the Pyramid Model, which focuses on social and emotional competence for young children. It is a three-tiered model that gives tools that help develop social and emotional skills, which are extremely important as children contribute to their education. Our presentation, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them.
I have a question. How many students do you have?
We offer service to a hundred and ninety-seven children in our program. Approximately a hundred in the morning and ninety-seven in the afternoon.
And what would you say to a parent who wasn't sure, you know, there's a lot of parents who feel that, you know, like preschool isn't something that's a necessity? What would you say to that?
Preschool is a building block for the rest of the educational experience. Children who are going to kindergarten have specific expectations, but if they haven't been in a social and emotional environment where they're able to separate from their parent, where they may have not had the opportunity to follow a specific set of directions, such as a two or three-step direction, kindergarten is extremely challenging. Children are expected to have several self-help skills under their belt at that age. And if they haven't been afforded the opportunity, then how are we going to expect them to be successful in kindergarten? I would also say to parents, come in, visit the program, see what we're doing. We have an open-door policy. Our UPK director, Katie Polhemus, is always available for our parents. Our teachers are available to answer questions as well. And until you have the opportunity to really participate in peer interactions, in small group activities, in large group activities, until you have that opportunity, you can't really say, oh, my child's ready for kindergarten. We've been practicing letters. And a lot of times when that first day comes around and we do that initial conference and they say, well, I'll bet it was twenty-six uppercase and twenty-six lowercase. And because it's not mom, it's not that familiar environment. I think that's the biggest part of the UPK program is this.
Then another question I had, it was regarding your individual math monitoring.
Mm-hmm.
Could you give an example of their comprehension of operations and algebraic?
What in the world does that mean? Operations and algebraic thinking on a preschool level looks at the concepts of adding to and taking from. So if we start with two frogs and we add three more, how many friends can get a frog? Oh, that's five friends. So did we start with more or less? So it's taking that big giant term and bringing it down to a level where it's something practical. Oh, we've got four cookies. How are we going to separate them? Well, there's two of us, so I can have one and you can have one, and then I can have one and you can have one. So breaking that concept down and starting with the basics of under, counting and cardinality, which looks at, what is that number? What does that mean? So that number three, written, as we all know it as adults, what does that look like? Well, that looks like three counters or three frogs or three cookies. Once we have that solidified in a child's mind, then we can talk about operations and algebraic thinking, where we're talking about taking to and adding, subtracting from, fewer and less than. So there's a variety of different ways to look at it. But when you see operations and algebraic thinking in four-year-olds, it just sort of is definitely a great question. You're welcome.
Then my last question was about the Pyramid Model. Could you give examples of how that will be implemented?
The Pyramid Model looks at social emotional competence for children. One of the important factors in this, this Pyramid Model, which is coming out to all childcare providers in New York State and that we're part of our UPK program, looks at the child on an individual level and are they able to identify their specific emotions, how they're feeling, and develop empathy and understanding of other people's emotions? So a lot of it will be focused, a social emotional curriculum, where we're talking about how we're feeling and how that makes us in different situations. So if you just figured out, yes, those three frogs are more than those two frogs, that's a time where we're going to say, how do you feel right? And you feel like you're successful? How do you feel right now when you can't get your backpack hung up? I feel frustrated. So that they'll have those words and abilities to express themselves to teach other adults in the program. So it's really a more individualized curriculum.
Anything else?
I have a question. You said you have roughly two hundred students?
A hundred and ninety-seven.
A hundred and ninety-seven. Has that population been increasing, decreasing, remained steady recently? Has that population been increasing, decreasing, remained steady recently?
Our population generally tends to stay at 197. Our AM program, I will say, has more consistent enrollment because of the transportation that's provided by the district. Our PM program tends to fluctuate more as parent schedules change, but generally, we serve 197 children. There's obviously absenteeism throughout the year, but that 197 is a pretty reliable number.
I know you guys recently added a second location. Are you possibly looking into another more or --
That's why I took the mic. That number that they quoted, the state has frozen the total number of students probably for the last 10 years. So we have an overall total of 232 between the two sites. Well, Learner's Grow has two sites, Northminster is the third, but the state has capped that and has not funded that anymore. So if we added more students, we would not receive any more revenue. The total revenue for the UPK program as a whole that we get, that we disburse, is $606,120, and we cannot add any more students unless we're covering the cost.
Apologize for coming in in the middle of your presentation.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Included is your information. I did want to share with you that this year, we've added, as part of our presentation last year, we mentioned that we were going to work on our social stories, and this is the social story, as it's completed, about going to kindergarten. So each child's elementary school is represented. So even if you're at our Cicero location and you're going to end up at, for example, Bear Road because of swing streets, there's a specific book for your specific school with pictures of your principal, your gym, your cafeteria.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, very well done. Thank you. Folks from Northminster.
Fowler, I'm the director at Northminster Early Childhood Center. So we are the small but mighty UPK program over on the far west side of the district. This is our sixth year providing, and we've just signed a contract with the district to continue that, and we're looking forward to continuing our services. We have 35 students, and Jamie Kerr is a master's degree-certified teacher that took an AM and a PM section, and her class size is no larger than 18 children, and in the morning, she had two assistants to teach with her. Heard a lot about preschool activities, so I, you know, I won't continue much discussion about that. But there's a daily routine of choice time when the children arrive, and then the program is designed around academic centers, so that the, actually, the children are, it's not child-centered activities, it's more teacher-directed activities in the academic centers. Again, English and Language Arts and math skills are emphasized, but also arts and crafts activities allow for creative expression and also following directions. The picture you see here is a visit from the folks at Home Depot, who offer a building project, and the children have to follow directions very closely. It also offers an opportunity for parents to come in and help us out. We have story time that I enjoy with the kids where I visit and pick out a strong moral theme to the story that's in addition to any of the read-alouts that Mrs. Kerr uses with the curriculum. Large muscle development is very important for preschoolers, and as time goes on, we're seeing, we're seeing challenges with large motor coordination as well as fine motor. So we like to get the kids outside as much as we can, and they have 20 minutes of large muscle play each day. We're proud to say that we have a music teacher, and a concert is provided for parents and loved ones at holiday time in December and also, again, in the spring. Stephanie Mata, who you see here with a three-year-old class, I didn't have a picture of the UPKs with her, is doing some music and movement. She was an SU grad student who is amazingly talented and was able to do great things with -- So again, we are addressing the common core for preschoolers, and there are five domains. And then each of the units that we plan reflect those domains, they address those domains. And I have to say that overall approaches to learning is always included. That's the social, emotional, and the readiness to learn that's so important. But we have a great time coming up with activities and just hands-on events for the kids. The teachers brainstorm at the beginning of the year, and then we lay out the program. In your blue folders, you'll see a handout on the left-hand side pocket of a chart, and that is handed out to parents on Orientation Day, and it outlines color and shape of the month, letter of the week, and the unit themes, so that they're ready to support Just a quick thing, the picture of, those were garden boxes that were built by a volunteer, and this is Mrs. Kerr's class planting their seeds this spring. And the picture in the lower right-hand corner is actually the harvest that came from that this summer. I loved this. During our Community Helpers Unit, this is actually a UPK dad. He and his partner that drive a cherry picker truck for National Grid were able to get permission to come and show the kids, and they, one of the children here is wearing the protective sleeves, and that's actually Nick Brown. His dad's kind of kneeling over him, so proud to show off what his dad did for a living, and the kids were so enthralled with the whole idea of the big equipment. We do also make direct instruction in math, and the slide shows the children celebrating the 100th day of school. The 100th day is a great way of each calendar day adding a number and counting up the days of school. They actually learn to count by fives and count by tens and get the sense of that 10 tens is 100. And hands-on, even the block center will help them with cause and effect and them that everyone needs to focus on with science and technology. We also use the Get Set for School curriculum handwriting without tears, and I'm proud to say that all of our teachers, the three-year-olds and the four-year-old teachers, are trained directly from that, the people that publish the curriculum. So we focus on all of the basics, print concepts, phonological awareness, and word recognition. On the chart that was also in the blue folder, you'll notice all the way over to the right-hand column is a list of the site words that are taught along with that. I was grateful for the opportunity that I had this year with Dan Bowles. I was actually able to look at the first-quarter report cards for the children that we sent to Allen Road, and I, my takeaway on that was that we need to get the kids even to a greater level of mastery with the kindergarten readiness skills, because there is attrition over the summer, unfortunately. I'm proud that part of our, I was talking about handwriting without tears, but also we have a strong emphasis on service learning. The children here in the picture are riding their tricycles for the St. Jude's Trikathon in the spring. And we also did a food drive where nearly every family in the school participated, and of course, we had a strong participation from the UPK classes for a food pantry on the north side of Syracuse. We are careful to screen in the fall for any red flags, and this year, two children were referred out for a special program because their needs could not be met within the UPK setting. But it's very common for two or three therapists to be in the classroom, teaching alongside and supporting the children who have needs. I have to say, I'm very impressed with our district's transition to, for children who have special needs as they will continue services in kindergarten. This year, we also had a parent-led fundraiser. We had a lot of fun with a spaghetti dinner in October, and that will happen again. So in the fall, we noticed some, we have poor fine motor skills and some significant social skills lacking. We're seeing this more and more, where the children really need to be processed through getting along with others, negotiating differences, and sharing, even for four-year-olds. Many of them already had experiences in a group setting and had come from our own three-year-old program, so that was a strength. A chart here shows the brigands pre- and post-testing that we used, and 64% of the children already had fallen into an average range, with some in the gifted. The little sliver at the top represented the children that fell below the at-risk cutoff point. And our results in the spring show that that sliver is gone, and it's filled in with all of the children falling within the above-average-to-average range, and the rest of the group, 36%, falling above the gifted cutoff. Not to say that they would arrive to kindergarten-ready to be in a gifted program, but it does show that they're probably ready to read. So for an eight-month difference between pre- and post-testing, we showed 14 months of growth overall for the entire group. And as you can see, there was much more social and group for individuals. I know it's been a long night, and you probably are ready to move on. So we want to continue the strong, the curriculum with creative curriculum. I really enjoy the quality of the literature that comes with creative curriculum, and we also will continue using Get Set for School. We will continue a strong parent involvement. The Special Events Calendar that's in your folder also, there's a little asterisk next to each of the events that, where we included or asked for parent help, and you'll see that it happens quite often, that they are involved with what's going on at school. Good training for the coming years. And we also will continue sending home a bi-monthly newsletter, and I really want to get to blogging as I'm finding that more and more, as years go on, parents just need help with what we used to think were commonsense parenting issues, but they really just need that support. And I'm also proud to say that we, because we are licensed as a daycare center or a childcare center through New York State, we have accepted the invitation to participate in their Quality Stars program. So what they do is they take basic, centers who are meeting the expectations and the regulations that are set forth by the state, and we get an opportunity to make ourselves even better. So I'm looking forward to additional training money and money to be invested in anything from furniture to augmenting our library, so. Questions?
Questions, Jenny.
Also in the folder was, is there a progress report that's done in January and in June, and you'll, just the basic kindergarten readiness standards that the children are assessed on? Any questions?
Dan, any comments?
The programs do an excellent job. Don and I visit each site no less than twice a year. We have meetings in between as far as planning. What Mrs. Fowler just said was, we've solidified a five-year contract. We used to do yearly contracts, and what we were able to work with is doing a five-year contract, especially if we're pleased with the program, allows for long-term planning for the programs, to continue to expand and explore their options. The one thing that we've talked about is, again, looking at how to improve, and I think the next thing that we'll look to do is trying to set up time where we can meet with the kindergarten teachers and the UPK providers, to get feedback from the kindergarten teachers, what are they seeing in the classroom from students that have been in the UPK program that first year of kindergarten.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next presentation is the Capital Project Update. Mr. Keegan, Mr. Warburg. Buddy from King &amp; King? You guys who sail in on your own?
It's us.
All right, just to review a little bit, as we talked about at the last board meeting, you know, the question may come up, you know, why do we need to renovate Bear Road? I think that can be answered very easy. Rectum to go to the building and take a look. The reality is, it's a 1950s vintage building. It's had very, very little done, a little bit done in the mid-'60s, and then we did a roof replacement around 2004. If you have visited there, you know the traffic pattern, buses, students, parents, it's a nightmare, and there is no, it exists right now. As you can see in some of these pictures, this is the main entrance, certainly not a very inviting welcome, certainly not what I think anybody here wants to see for the entrance to their elementary school. The exterior, again, 1950s vintage, nothing has been done, and it is in dire need of replacement. Not very energy-efficient, it certainly provides many obstacles to enter. It's beyond its useful life. Again, another view just of the parking. As you can see here, this is the crosswalk, the bus loop, the visitor entrance, all in one typical classroom. If you take a look on the left, the floors, you'll see there's a floor tile. The most, these floors are all asbestos tiles, so when they pop up, we either glue them back down or we find something that fits and put it back in. So we have some very interesting floor patterns in the classrooms. Move into our preliminary site plan, as we talked about at the last board meeting. As you'll see, on the right side of this picture is a new bus loop that will separate the parent drop. Main entrance has been moved to the front northeast or top-right corner, as you see now, which will allow for a controlled entrance in and out of the building. Preliminary, excuse me, building organization. The building's basically going to be broke up into pods. We're trying to break out spaces, not just the traditional classroom setting. Gives you an idea of some of the things that have been done to bring buildings into the modern age, just to kind of give you an idea of what some of the options. Look at our phasing plan, as we talked about at the last meeting. Mr. Bowles has worked some magic for us, and we believe we can move the fourth out of the building. We've built up approximately six classrooms. With that, with some other creative restructuring, take, for instance, that back hallway on the left. on the left, that for our construction area, and then counterclockwise, clockwise, we may complete the entire project. Transportation, okay. New transportation fueling statement, or station currently. We definitely have a need for a new station. The existing one is, is... That need, and we have a tremendous amount of activity there, so it certainly will benefit and make the flow much easier. Gives you a preliminary site plan. As you will see, the buses will enter from between the maintenance...
New transportation food service?
Pull in, fuel, and pull out. On the top of that diagram, when we bring in the... Transportation Food Service. That will be the only thing that we will bring in on that, that west side.
As we described before, the, we've done a lot of work with fiscal advisors, King &amp; King, and Watchdog, or Construction Consultants, Construction Management Firm, and to try to make sure that we've got the right numbers. And we believe the total project cost is 22.5 million. We've got estimates here of our aid, and we are fortunate that we've got a $350,000 grant that we'll be using to supplement the costs of the transportation center. But at the end of the day, the local share is going to be about $10.5 million. That's about a 1% increase on the tax levy, about 25 cents per thousand, or about $25 for a $100,000 home. And that's the financial piece of it. In terms of the calendar events, a lot of work's been done, but as everybody knows, we can't spend a lot of money planning for a project that the voters haven't approved yet. So, there's a lot of work to be done. We're hoping that tonight, the board approves resolutions that you'll consider later on in the meeting. There's an item after that that would be a public meeting on October 5th, and we'd like to have that at Bear Road. I think, as John started the presentation, there's nothing more compelling than just actually being in the building and seeing the condition of it and seeing the needs. So, that public meeting will be on October 5th at Bear Road. Referendum at our voting sites of Cisroel and here at the district office on October 18th. And then, subject to the voters' approval, the work will be done to actually prepare construction documents and finalize planning. And all the while, we're very much committed to working with the teachers at Bear Road and the staff there to make sure that the building meets their needs, and it's designed to meet their needs. And John showed a number of conceptual drawings there, but again, a lot of details need to be worked out. And there's a lot to be done. And the timing of this, if you look at the construction phase, the building wouldn't be constructed until July of '18. That's a year from this coming summer. And it would, you know, we were planning on at least a full school year where you'd be working on construction, and final completion and closeout would be in the 2020 timeframe. And in between that, we would build the fuel station. So, we might be able to get, if the voters approve and everything works well with SED, which at this stage of the game, there's no guarantees of that because of some of the administrative challenges they have. But we'd like to get the fueling transportation centerpiece done before we start Bear Road, if that's possible. I want to just point out a couple bold points on here. We looked at a lot of different options to try to save the district money about, you know, possibly compressing the construction timeframe and relocating the students to another building, but that just didn't work out to be economically feasible. That's the calendar events and the financial considerations. Does anybody have questions on the project?
Well, I know you guys have been working. The schools in our district are an asset for the community, and it's one of our responsibilities to make sure we maintain this, so I'm in agreement that this needs to be done. One question I had was, how do they go about determining how much aid we get for these projects? Like, the grant money? How is that determined?
The way it works is that you only get aid on classrooms. So, that's the way they look at it, and they basically say, you know, for reconstructing an existing classroom, this is how much aid you're going to get. And if you have a special needs classroom, you'll get a higher level of aid. And so, what, one thing that's nice between fiscal advisors and King &amp; King, they did a lot of analysis of just looking at what aid we'd be eligible for, given what we've presented tonight. And so, we're pretty confident that the amount of aid listed here is the right amount. Now, again, there's, as we work through the finer details of the design, maybe there'll be a slight adjustment, maybe we'll have one more special aid classroom, one less. Maybe we'll have, there's a little bit of difference in the calculations when you look at a, building a new classroom versus a reconstructed classroom. And so, there's fine tuning, but we're highly confident that that number's pretty darn close to what the aid amount's going to be.
Yeah, and I'd just like to tag onto that a little bit. You know, we're working with aid formulas that are decades old. They don't necessarily meet what the educational... That hurts us, and it hurts... Catch up with the times with...
I know, really.
I won't live long enough to see it.
Among other...
I will say this, it's been a good, it's been a good process for me. Because John's been through a couple of projects, and the most recently, Smith Road, which was, you know, huge. Mike has done a lot of projects, and so, we were very fortunate to be able to sit with the architects, with the attorney. Harris-Lenonfeld is working on the project. We've been able to get some advice from Watchdog. So, Annette, Mike, myself, and John have had several conferences where we feel like we've really unearthed a lot of good information in preparation for this project.
Is there any other opportunities for possible grants, maybe for the fueling station project, or?
We have, we've hit our legislators pretty hard on, for grant monies, and we think that, I don't, not to mismanage expectations, I think we've probably got as much grant money into this project as we're going to get.
Question. For the fueling station, is there a plan during construction of how that's all going to work?
Yes, the nice thing about it is, if you, if we go back to that diagram real quick, you'll see Building 7 there on the right. That's the mechanics building. And right in front, in front of that building is the current fueling station. So, the, where the new fueling station will be is right now, kind of a vacant lot. We park some vehicles there, it's some grassed space. So, what'll happen is, the operations should not be disrupted during the construction phase, because we're going to take unused property and build the fueling center there and keep, keep the existing one operational. So, it's really the, it should work out really well for us. Our fleet's too big to take our fueling station down and to replace it.
I just have a quick question. Smith Road was the first building we kind of moved the office and nurse and everything down to one section of the building. Has that been well-received by the staff over there? Just having the nurse so far away from the classroom, I know it makes sense for the office to be...
It's a great, I have to tell you, and this is something that John and I have had had some conversations on. We've gotten some negative feedback on that, very candidly. I think as a building administrator, I think I've gotten feedback from principals that, geez, I wish I was a little closer to the building. But we make, in this security environment we're in right now, that segregation of that single point of entry and your ability to control the traffic and separate the students as much as possible from visitors, that's the trade-off. And this model really is, has been proven. But yes, we have gotten a little bit of negative feedback, but...
For that reason, just saying, if, you know, principals being further away from the classrooms. But I completely understand the security aspect, and I think that that's the way we should go.
Right, and a lot of that, Mike, really, the site itself and the building layout dictated that.
Oh, sure.
If you look at some of the previous buildings, Gillette, Rox Mill, the main entrance is still the focal point, but the way the building layout is, it puts it more in the center. With these two buildings, the layout just does not make that conducive.
But really, with all the elementary buildings...
Sometimes you kind of are limited to what you have to work with.
Oh, yeah. I was just curious to see if, because that was the first building we really did that with.
I'm glad you mentioned Smith Road, though, because I think John did, talked about this a little bit in one of our recent meetings, but we've learned a lot from Smith Road. So, anything that we think we can improve on, we're going to. And one of the things I thought was great is that King &amp; King worked with us on reconciling the cost of Smith Road to the cost of a renovated Bear Road, and really challenged themselves to say, hey, what should this cost? So, we not only went from kind of the ground up to come to a number, but we reconciled Smith Road to the number. And so, you know, I think Bear Road is going to benefit from the fact that Smith Road was built first, and we've learned some things. And as a result, we're reasonably competent in the numbers that we're presenting tonight.
Anything else? Thank you, guys. Mr. Keegan's going to stay right there. Bring us up to date on the June 30 fund balance.
So, as I do every year, you know, our year-end is June 30th. Our business office is actively closing the books for the year. And while that job isn't done, we are pretty darn close to knowing what our final numbers are going to be, and we feel it's important to come to the board with a presentation about our fund balance and reserves, which gives you a sense of the district's financial position. So, let's, let's start, I know there's a lot of numbers here, but remember, we have this thing called fund balance. And unassigned fund balance, that first line, that represents the district's savings. It's not designated necessarily for anything specific. It, on $155 million budget, it represents the money we have available to us for unforeseen contingencies. And we had, we closed the year, June 30th of '15, one year ago, with a 4.7% fund balance, which was a great improvement over the last several years. And it was the first year that we were not designated as a district, you know, that was under financial stress. And so, we're real happy with that. So, the, shortly after the year closed, we met with the board, or actually, our voters approved a establishment of a capital reserve, and the board funded $500,000 into that reserve. We, again, used a lot of the financial disciplines that we've used as we came through this difficult financial times to both maximize our revenues and conserve our expenses. I will tell you, we were very fortunate this year. As everybody knows, energy costs were favorable, fuel costs were favorable, healthcare costs, believe it or not, you've heard us all, we've talked a lot about our move from PomCo, TPA to the Exelis Network, and that had great benefits for us, even though it was a partial year, it was the majority of our school year. So, we ended up with a variance in revenues and expenditures that contributed to our fund balance, almost $4.3 million, which is probably, I think, maybe the best year we've had in the last five. We had a nominal change, this is confusing, change in appropriation or non-spendable. If you remember, last year, not for the current budget year, but for the prior year, the board agreed to designate $750,000 worth of fund balance. Well, this year, for the '16-'17 school year, the board agreed to $950,000. So, because we are using another $200,000 worth of fund balance, that's that $200,000 there. The $445 is just a slight adjustment to the non-spendable portion of the fund balance. But then, we, we're going to, the next three line items are a proposal for three increases in reserves, and we've talked about this a lot. There's been a lot of tax tertiary activity. I'm going to talk about that in more detail in the next slide, and we need to increase our reserve. The voters approved a capital reserve of $2.5 million. We'd like to fully fund that now, and while we have the opportunity to do that, as we're, as we're kind of raising our head after the disastrous financial condition over the last five years, and looking forward to taking care of the many schools and facilities we have, we really need to get that reserve fully funded. And then, we need to have our workman's compensation reserve increase. So, I'm going to talk about those three in a moment. But if we do those things, our unassigned fund balance at 6/30/16, which is the end of this past fiscal year, would be $7.6 million on a budget of $155 million, or a slight increase, and our fund balance would be a 4.9%. So, let's, let's talk about the rationale for increasing our reserves. Well, workman's compensation, we are, we use a third-party administrator that looks at all the cases over all the years. And so, if Joe employee falls, hurts themselves, a professional looks at that injury and says, this is what it's going to cost in medical, as well as in any other penalty or costs associated with that claim, to settle that claim. And we have a liability now for all of our claims of about $2.7 million. Well, our workman's comp reserve is only $1.8 million. And we've known this, by the way, over the last, you know, many years, we've known all of our reserves have been low, and so, each year, we've done the best we can to increase them. So, if we increase that by $250,000, that'll get us to $2.1 million. And I guess what I'm telegraphing is that I'll probably be back here if the district does well enough financially in the next coming year, looking to potentially increase that workman's compensation reserve again. Tax tertiary, the market has been so volatile, we went through the downturn in the economy. A lot of people came in and said, my property's not worth what it used to be. And those act, believe it or not, we have many cases, tax tertiary matters, that where companies have come forward, and we've got three and four and five years of assessments that are being contested. Well, the Ferrara firm has seven matters totaling $1.8 million, and Bonchank &amp; King has 16 matters totaling $1.4 million. So, our total exposure is like $3.2 million. We'd like to increase our tax tertiary reserve by $800,000 and bring the balance to about $1.4 million. Again, it's not the total exposure, but we probably won't settle those cases at $3.2 either, so somewhere in between. The capital reserve, I mentioned that already. It seems like since we did have a good year in terms of our performance, that we ought to fund that reserve completely as approved by the taxpayers. And those are the three, the three items. So, this is what it would look like, each reserve listed there as of the end of last year, and what they would be at the end of this year. And that's pretty much, that's pretty much the conversation about, about fund balance and reserves. Are there any questions or concerns?
I just have a question. How far back can someone go to attest their tax assessment?
Well, it's not about going back so far, it's about filing a claim while the window is open. And do you know, Mike, off the top of your head, what the, it's, there's a window, you can't, you, there's a, you know how in your town, they have a period of time when people can come and contest their assessment? You have to contest during that period of time. If you don't do that, then you, the window closes and your assessment's final. So, what ends up happening is people come forward and they contest their assessments, but then, a lot of evidence needs to be collected about comparable properties and a number of methodologies that assessors have to go through. It's a little more, less complicated for residential property. The assessments that we're dealing with are for large commercial properties. And so, these companies come each year, and you'll get two and three and four years that build up, that haven't been settled yet.
With the state budget, they changed the STAR exemption?
Yeah, and that hasn't necess, that hasn't affected our tax tertiary, but that's a very good point. So, what's happening is, if people move into a new home, instead of getting a adjustment to their assessment that actually reduces their tax bill, they'll get a tax refund or a tax, a claim on their tax return that in effect is money that they have to apply for to get, which they're still entitled to, but it's just a different flow of funds. And so, that, and I just, not to beat this to death, but STAR really doesn't affect us. We don't administer the program, you know, we do our tax levy, our $82 million tax levy. What in essence happens is those bills go out, and the taxpayer pays their share, and New York State pays us the STAR share. And that'll happen either way, so we'll get our full, we'll collect our full levy. So, we're kind of not in the loop necessarily on the STAR, but it's meaningful to our taxpayers when they think about the tax levy.
But in the end, it'll be the same exemption.
Same economic value for the district and for the taxpayer as well. And any questions on fund balance or reserves?
I kind of have, I'm just curious about this. A lot of money, where is it? You know, is it an interest-bearing account?
Oh, well, I wish I could say it was invested well.
Yeah.
But the reality of it is, there's, we're very limited in terms of how we invest our money.
Right.
The banks that have our money, it has to be collateralized properly, and we earn interest, but it's very small interest rates.
But it's safe.
And so, the good news, that's the bad news. Oh, it's very safe, very safe, very secure, and that's very regulated in terms of what we can do. That's the bad news. The good news is, you know, we're a borrower. We borrow money as a district because we need to pay bills before we get them. We borrow money as a district because we need to pay bills before we get that tax, the taxes collected. We need to, like, for example, we're going to, one of our things we're going to talk about later in the meeting tonight is just bonding for the junior high roof. We have to borrow money, you know, for all these projects we do. And the good news is, borrowing is very cheap. So, you know, what you don't earn in interest, you save in interest expense. So that's kind of the good news.
Are we moving too much money with the cap?
Well, I don't believe so. I think the reality of it is, we've got a couple of those matters that are fairly large. Remember how the thing works? I think my assessment's worth X, and you think it's Y. And so, the 3.2 million represents the amount claimed, and so, it doesn't necessarily meant, and I think, you know, you just remember, we just settled one that I, where I think the district's exposure was over 600,000, and we ended up settling it for 180,000 or something like that, you know, 160,000. So, you know, we're, I don't know where it's going to land, but I, in my, in my heart of heart, I don't, I don't believe that we're leaving ourselves exposed. And having said that, we still have money in our fund balance. If something like that happened and we had a terrible settlement, we could take money out of the fund balance. And remember about that debt, the capital reserve, is that we can't spend that money without voter approval. So from a voter's perspective, they ought to feel really comfortable that that money's being put in a secure place and that the district can't just go off half-cocked and spend it somewhere. We would need their approval to do so. So I think, I think we're safe. Any further comments or questions?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Don, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, 3A, comments from the audience. I have nothing on the sheet here. Connie, anything else? No? We'll move to 4A, board committee reports, comments. Anybody with any committee reports, comments?
First policy meeting. Connie will be sending that out, and it looks like that will be September 19th.
About the legislative, is there nothing set yet?
Waiting for dates for everybody.
Okay. Superintendent's comments.
I'm just going to add that we're down to the wire here. We, I guess, forget from August to August what it's really like at the end, and we're scrambling with last-minute arrangements, and we will be ready when the students arrive. There's been an incredible amount of professional development for our new reading program, for our more inclusive model, for technology, so I'm confident that we'll be ready.
Item 5, routine action items. A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of August 8th. Consideration of the classification and school placement of disabled students as certified by the Committee on Special Education. And C, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students as certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education. Do I have a motion to take, to approve all three of these as a group? Mr. Fafalia, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? Eight, zero, seven, zero, pardon me. Six, discussion and action items. We have to do quite a few of these one at a time. The first one, the recommendation to approve the revised district calendar, Annette, just comment on that, please?
Sure, just two things. One, there was a change in region states, so we needed to make a note of that. And of course, the big one is the change in the date for graduation. So I ask you to approve that tonight so we can get that publicized.
And the location of graduation also changing as well. Your motion to approve the revised calendar. Ms. Cash, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? B and C and D, I would think we can take as a group to create a 1.0 FTE special ed at Roxborough Middle. B, recommendation to create a .2 FTE PE teacher at Roxborough Road Elementary, which is connected to two other positions to create a .5 FTE PE teacher. And D, a recommendation to create a 1.0 FTE teaching assistant. So is there a motion to take six, B, C, and D as a group? Ms. Cash, Mr. Fafalia, all in favor? Seven, zero. E, adoption of the emergency response plan. I think John is here available. What do you want to tell us about that, John?
Well, I probably should at least give you a little.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What we're talking about here. Well, I'm setting this up. I'd like to start off to say, this, the emergency response plan is once again another unfunded mandate by the state.
Duly noted.
Duly noted. And as always, it was put out June with very vague guidelines, kind of an evolving document as it stands right now. All right. So the plan, what the plan really is, it was a federal mandate to make all the (inaudible) similar throughout the country, the states, and the state jumped on. Doing that, originally, we used to have a red, blue, green plan that really dictated what we did in the buildings. Those plans have now gone away, and they've been replaced by what you see in front of us. So the terminology has changed from colors and that to specific language. We have shelter in place, hold in place, evacuate, lockout, and lockdown. Now, we're predominantly in a lockout situation all the time, except arrival and dismissal and, you know, there's just no way, a way around that. So what this will do is replace the red, blue, green plans, and we'll replace the red folders in the classrooms. We've posted these in the, in all the classrooms currently, and we're also printing, in the process of printing flip charts for all the teachers. So instead of a red folder that they'll keep in their desk, they're going to have a little small flip directions on them, each labeled, they'll be able to flip right to it when that announcement, and follow the directions as given on the cards. That's the first step. The second step was, we had to train all the staff, which we did this spring. The third step is, the staff is going to have to review these with the students. Again, that will be published for parents to see as well, so everybody understands. So we've completed about 80% of the process right now. Once the students get back, we'll wrap up the last few pieces. Plan itself is very extensive. A lot of it is certainly not something we want to discuss in a public session, but it deals with everything from, you know, this, and I'll show you just a quick table of contents to give you an idea. So in the table of contents, you have the basic plan, which really documents your training, goes over why the plan is, what the regulations are. Then you move into your functional annexes. This is kind of that quick chart I showed you. And then, it gets more in-depth into crime scene management, continuity of operations. So it's a very in-depth document. This is, we reviewed this with Cabinet, and pretty much, everybody's in agreement with how we have this developed at the moment. Into the second part, gets into a little more specific instances that they may run into. As you can see here, we had a new carbon monoxide regulation come about by the state this spring, where we had to place those in anywhere where there was a possibility of carbon monoxide based on any gas-operated unit. So that was added into this template as part of their emergency response plan. And then, you get into the appendixes, and that's where it really designates who's involved and what their responsibilities are. Principals all have these. I'm in the process right now of doing their books for them. They have an electronic copy, and there will be stages throughout the year that we will do training with the staff on more individual pieces of this. That's the plan in kind of a, you know, large overview, let's say.
In a nutshell, readers digest.
Yes. Any questions?
I don't know if this is Jason or Annette. The issue we always have with substitutes, the roving teacher substitutes who are today in Allen Road and tomorrow in Smith Road, how are they trained on the plan for that building? Because it's, you know, with their flipping charts in the middle of something, that's not going to work well.
I don't have a perfect answer for you.
Okay, I didn't think you would.
I will be honest with you. It's really an evolving document right now. Some of the reporting, and, you know, there's a lot more questions than there are with answers on this, especially on the reporting side. Things get thrown out, and we're really trying to grasp with how we're going with that.
I could just add, we have an administrative intern that's going to be working primarily with human resources this school year, and she has taken on a project, and we're actually meeting tomorrow morning to talk about a substitute handbook that gives specific information about each one of the schools, and we would give that to subs when they're hired. And depending what school they went to, they would just flip to that chapter about that school.
Excellent, excellent.
Get a map of the school in the booklet and specific information provided by the principal of that building. This is a great question, because that's another thing I'll share with her, to put the emergency procedures for the district into that booklet in advance, and they can take that home with them and have it.
Excellent, excellent.
One other piece to this that did not mention that came out about a month ago was another regulation of this, was a mental health piece, which was very vague as well. We did work with BOSI's. Penny Williams at BOSI's came to the principals and directors meeting on the 17th. We trained all the principals and reviewed the presentation with them. I'll be sending that presentation and some handouts to the principals. They're going to be required to meet with their staff to review that, and then, we'll continue as more information comes on that piece. We'll continue to refine exactly what all that we're going to need to do to meet that.
Excellent. Annette?
So if there's no other questions before you go further to adopt this, I just want to thank John, because in addition to all of his other duties around here, despite the vagueness with this unfunded mandate, as it unfolded with very little detail, he's really embraced it and done an awesome job putting it together and communicating it out to the administrators and staff. So, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a deadline to have that done by?
Yes. September 15th. The report had to be turned in by October 1st, I believe. The nice part was, I was, had some inside information that this was coming around last November.
Give some time.
So I had a little leeway. It was a monumental task. I could not tell you how much paper one building is. Lot of it had to be developed, so it took me all that time to get there.
You know, right away, so.
Hey, thank you, John. Well done. So is there a motion for the adoption of the emergency response plan? Mr. Marizio or Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Seven, zero. Acknowledgement of the gift. North Star's Boys Golf Booster Club has donated $6,222 to reinstate the Boys Green Golf Advisor for the 2016-17 school year, and that ties to G, which is a recommendation to reinstate the Boys Green Golf. So we'll take F and G together. Is there a motion to approve these together? Mr. Fafalia, Scanlon, all in favor? Now, these, H and I, I believe, are the roll call votes, Connie?
No. The roll call votes are for the, for K.
Or just K?
And the.
And L. Okay. Let's do H and I together, then. These are the CECA, State Environmental Quality Review Act resolutions. The first one, H, for the Transportation Center, refueling, and I would note that it makes the declaration, Fuel Island Project has no functional relo, oops, no, that's the wrong one. Okay. Yeah, the Board of Education hereby declares the Fuel Island Project is a Type II action, which requires no further review under the State Environmental Quality Review. So I would look for a motion to approve the CECA resolution for the Transportation Center. Mr. McClintock, somebody over yonder, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Seven, zero, thank you. I, which is the CECA resolution for the KWS Bear Road Project, and that is a, that is a negative, I'm trying to get to the right paragraph here.
Unlisted action.
It's an unlisted action. It's going to be the negative declaration, be filed, published, and distributed in accordance with New York rules and regulations. So we've got an unlisted declaration for the Bear Road Project. Is there a motion to approve that one? Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Marizio, all in favor? Seven, zero. Now, we go to J, which is a follow-up to Don's presentation on the reserves. This is a motion to approve the tax surchiary reserve increase, proposed worker compensation reserve increase, and the proposed capital reserve increase as presented by Mr. Keegan just a few minutes ago. So a motion to approve those. Mr. McClintock, Mr. Marizio, all in favor? Those are all approved. Now, K does have a roll call vote, Connie?
Yes.
Okay, this is that lengthy resolution, which authorizes a special district meeting on October 18th for the purpose of voting on the proposition for the reconstruction, renovation of KWS Bear Road, as well as the construction of the Transportation Fielding Center at a total aggregate estimated maximum cost not to exceed $22,500,000. That a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, October 5th at 7:00 PM at the Bear Road Elementary School, and a section on this, the four publications in the newspaper. So is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the special district meeting? Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Harrington, Connie?
Michael Schuster.
Yes.
Michael Marizio.
Yes.
Paul Fafalia.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Yes.
Elizabeth Cash.
Scott McClintock.
Mary Scanlon.
Yes.
L is the notice of the vote, the special, notice of the special meeting. This is what will appear in the newspaper the four times, and the time as well for the registration of voters, all the requirements, et cetera, et cetera. So this will actually be the notice to be put in. Is there a motion to approve the legal notice of the special meeting? Ms. Cash, Mr. McClintock, all in favor? Nope, sorry, sorry, roll call, roll call.
Michael Schuster.
I.
Michael Marizio.
Yes.
Paul Fafalia.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Elizabeth Cash.
Yes.
Mike, oops, Scott McClintock.
Hi.
And Mary Scanlon.
Yes.
For the, which one? The tax rate. M is the establishment of the tax rate. Mr. Keegan, what would you like to tell us about that?
Well, I think the, as the taxpayers will remember, we talked about a levy increase and a tax rate increase of 1.09%. As it turns out, when the assessments came through, the final assessments, each of the three towns experienced a lesser tax increase. The towns of Salina and Cicero experienced a negative 0.32% tax rate increase. Obviously, the levy still went up, but people's rate went down by 0.32%. The town of Clay had a 0.61% increase. Again, all three of them lower than the 1.09% increase that we anticipated. And again, that's due to the equalization rate change in the town of Clay and the final assessments in all three towns.
Any questions for Don on this? There's good news relative to what was projected at budget book time. So a motion to. So a motion to establish the tax rates? Ms. Scanlon, Ms. Cash? There a roll call, Connie? Yes, there is.
Yep, Michael Schuster.
Aye.
Michael Marizio.
Aye.
Paul Farfalia.
Aye.
George Harrington.
Aye.
Elizabeth Cash.
Yes.
Scott McClintock.
Aye.
And Mary Scanlon.
Aye.
There we go. Okay, Paul. And the authorization of the tax warrants, one for each of the three towns. Don, any comments on those or...
No, it's standard procedures. We've done every year.
So is there a motion to approve the three tax warrants? Mr. McClintock, Mr. Marizio, all in favor? Tax collection deposit agreement, Don?
Again, consistent with prior years, we've entered into... These are Class A towns. They do the collection on our behalf. You know, some of the smaller school districts actually have to collect their own taxes. We don't have to do that. So we entered into an agreement that the taxes will be collected and deposited and that the towns get to keep any interest. There is not on any of the money that they collect in exchange for their services, and they remit all the funds.
They keep the penalties as well if somebody's a late payer?
Um, you know...
I was used to. Not that that's significant.
Yeah.
Humor me and check on that.
Yeah, I'll check on that.
Is there a motion to approve the tax collection deposit agreement for the three towns? Ms. Scanlon, Ms. Cash, all in favor? Two plus of non-marketable and marketable equipment. Got a list of things to be seen there. You know, look at Don, anything there of significance?
Nothing worth noting, I don't think.
Are you sure we can't use the VCR?
I thought you could at least get boat anchors or something out of them. Okay, is there a motion to approve the surplus of marketable and non-marketable equipment? Nobody over there, we'll come over here. Liz, okay, and Mary, all in favor? Consideration of contract award? There's bids open for audiovisual equipment, and the low bidder, B&amp;H Photo, in the amount of $61,666.81. Is there a motion to approve? Marizio, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? All right, the next one is a bond resolution for the North Syracuse Junior High School. Don?
So as you know, with any capital project, when the voters approved this, they also approved that we could borrow money to support the project. And so we are... Although for this project, we're going to use $150,000 with the fund balance, the balance of it will be financed in a manner that allows it to match up with our state aid that we'll receive over that... Over the period of time. So this resolution just authorizes us to issue debt.
Is it a roll call, Connie?
Nope.
No, it is not. Hi, is there a motion to approve the bond resolution for the junior high school renovation, reconstruction project? Ms. Cash, Mr. McClintock, I need to abstain on that, Connie, because of my job? All in favor otherwise? So I can't raise my hand for that, so six, zero, one.
Don, is that project going on schedule?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. You might have noticed that roofers are up on the roofs, and they've poured the subflooring, the cement flooring that'll go under the gym floor, and things are moving on schedule. I just will... I've said it before, I'll just say it again. One thing about the project that has been anticipated all along is that the gym floors will not be ready for the opening of school, but they'll be ready shortly thereafter. So... But yes, we're moving along well.
Thank you.
Instructional personnel and support personnel. Is there one retirement on support? Yeah, I want to get to that one if this thing will open up. There it comes. Now, a retirement there? I thought there was one. Okay, no retirement. Any questions on A and B? If not, we'll take a motion to approve personnel A and B. Mr. Frifalia, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? Seven, zero. We need a motion to enter into executive session. Mr. Harrington, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? Oh, I better read that. Thank you, Jenny. Motion to move in executive session for the purpose of reviewing three legal matters relative to potential litigation and to review the employment record of one individual with no action to follow. Executive session. Thank you very much. That's your dream, and that didn't...
Tax calculation, sure. I do this every year, but I have it here. Pull up my...
Oh, for real? Because I'm new on the rolls here or what?
Oh, I got it, of course. Hang on, let me just do it right here.
Nope, everybody on's already asked you. I thought you were going to submit a tax bill.
Final tax...
Um, okay.